Should we need repairs, the sales rep will come through, pick the stuff up that needs to be repaired and take it and bring it back. Anybody else, we need to have it shipped. The other advantage is when we have a new member that needs new gear, they have to be sized properly.
Or local, they can do that. So, uh, what are the name brands you referred to there? Cause I assume you-
You mean as far as what we're using right now?
The equipment itself, when you talk about the socking coat with the drag handle.
Yeah, that's a glow coat and pants. And then the helmet that we're using is a Khan six sixty six. And the boots, depending on needs, sizes, et cetera, are usually either Ranger Service or... No, they're out of it. So it's usually Ranger or Service. If someone has big feet, sometimes we have to go different.
Okay. So what I would say is this, uh, let us work with you. Let us do a little bit of competitive bidding outside of the area. It's probably internet delivered. It's a long ways away.
I'm not going to agree to that.
No, no, no. And what I think we can safely say is that if the amount of savings is not dramatic, the value of having somebody local who can do those sizings and things like that for us close-
And provide service.
And provide service outweighs the difference in cost, we would say. I think we just want to know exactly what that difference in price may be.
In the past, we have done mail order and it has cost us in that we, for whatever reason, the wrong size was ordered.
Yeah.
And when, especially the jackets come, because they are to Aspecs, they have ousted on the back of them. They're not really usable to anybody else once, if we-
Sure.
If we mess up and get the wrong size.
Really expensive Halloween costume.
Yes, it is.
Alright.
Or we put it in stock and hold it until someone comes to fit. The trouble is, at this point in time, all of that now has a ten year shelf life.
Understand. So like I said, maybe you can just provide the quote. We'll do a little bit of research. As long as the difference isn't... If you're saying we want to work locally, but the price is twice as much as what we could get it for. Okay, then it'll probably be a little bit-
You'll have to be careful on the specs.
That's why I want to work with you. I want to see exactly what you're providing.
We're supposed to have a set of a New Year's quote coming from Bergeron.
Yeah.
It should be here this week and next week.
Okay. Like I said, as long as it's not crazy amounts of money, then I think we would absolutely agree with your position.
The other thing too, in terms of gear, is that the two members that we've mentioned multiple times in the last year, one responded and said that they wanted to drop off their equipment-
That's what I was hoping.
And never have. And the other one, there was no response to the letter that was sent by the Select Board. Just so you guys know. So we've got two sets of gear plus multiple radios and things like that.
That you can't get back.
So let's follow up with a more straight letter to the one who responded.
Are they local?
Yes.
I think we should ask our police chief to handle it.
Yeah, that may be an next step.
Look at the smile on that guy.
Let's follow up with another letter to them. And we can talk about that through email. But I think the gist may be, you know, this is a last request before we have to take other action.
You agree?
At least last.
Good. That's a lot of money. What's the ballpark figure for it?
Um, one individual has well over five thousand dollars worth of equipment. Between radios, portables, monitors, turnout gear, forestry gear.
I'm all for going to getting it, so just do it tonight after the meeting.
Yeah. Why wait till the meeting? No, I'm glad you brought that up.
Alright. What else you got going on?
Just the normal. Um, we're upgrading some of our forestry equipment. Um, are you familiar with a hazel hole? A drill hole?
Nah, go ahead and explain that for everybody else here who doesn't know what that is.
That is one of the items that we use when we're doing a fire line, cut the fire line to contain a fire. And what it is, it's a super duty hole. But the handle is only about this long, so when you're using it, you're bent over all the time. We're trying to replace those with lighter, longer handled units.
A little easier on the back?
Oh, pull it.
Call that the old man's hose.
That's the one you can see on the other.
Alright, good.
I was thinking this sounded more like something, you know, my life.
Uh, even that is, for those that are vertically challenged, it's a workout.
Okay. So how about burn permits? A lot of them? A few of them?
Um, the electronic ones are picking up. We've had one individual in the last two weeks after being explained the issues about burning has bought four of them. Regular issued permits, um, don't know where we're at on that. We're issuing a few here and there. Kind of holding back because of the dryness that we've had occasionally.
Occasionally is a good word for it. Yeah. Alright. Anything else you can think of?
Just moving on.
Alright.
Does the new fire truck come with hoses or?
No.
So hoses off the other truck?
Uh, hoses, axes, um, some of the hand tools. It will come with new ladders, extension ladders and roof ladders. Um, new suction hose. All of the fittings and adapters will come off of the old truck.
So the hoses on the old truck are still in good shape? Sure, like we did last time with the Pierce.
How long ago were those replaced?
I don't know. Um, the two and a half was replaced, I believe, three years ago.
Okay.
Um, the inch and three quarter hose was replaced probably seven or eight years ago. And the four inch hose is probably somewhere around twelve or fourteen years old.
We've been talking about capital improvements planning for those little incidental items that sometimes sneak out. And I would think fire hose would be one of those things you'd want to track, you know?
Yeah, cause I mean, I know when we bought the Pierce, the fall of the year, we ended up having a fire hose. About forty or fifty thousand dollars to buy.
I don't remember what it was. That was the four inch hose. Which I had been urging that the chief prior to think about replacing. And it never came up. And then we started and found a whole bunch of weeks and everything and said, we need to do it. That's right. I shouldn't lie surprised it's for next.
We tried to, we tried to, we know it happens.
So it was a bear out once today.
Yeah.
Can I just have a question? Are the fire trucks like an oil truck? Can you reverse those hoses periodically?
No.
You can't?
No, they're one way.
Okay. Cause I know the oil trucks, you know, you're pulling a short distance and you can reverse them so that you're not getting wear on the one end all the time.
No, because they're threaded each end, male and female. So they are one way. The other thing, they are that way because if you do get trapped in a building, or I shouldn't say trapped in a building, but you lose your way and you have a hand line, but you have no idea where you are, you can, by feeling the couplings, know which way to go out. There is a difference in them. Um, what we do do is we will rotate the hose. When we use a P, uh, use a line, a hose line, usually it tends to get dirty. So when we get back to the station, we take and rinse it off with a pressure washer, try to get it clean. We'll put it off to one side and dry and put different hose onto it. So it's not the same piece getting dragged off every day. However, the four inch hose, the delivery hose, that is interchangeable. Those are just quarter turn couplers. But at sixteen hundred feet, it would have to all come off. And one length of four inch hose weighs about seventy pounds. It's not easy.
Any other questions for Ken? Thank you, sir. We'll see you back here in a month. We'll talk some more.
Um, can I ask him the same?
Yes.
We might as well go right into it so you can go home. We've got a, uh, pro sign question as to what we're going to use for verbiage on our classics roads. Remember-
Yes.
There was supposed to be some national.
Yeah, and I have that written down from our-
Okay, well, I spent some time on it.
Did I call the department or anything in there?
No.
Yeah, me either.
Okay. I called fishing game. I called, um, State Transportation Sign Department. And they all said they were not familiar with this national. So what I did with that, the Acro's, uh, classics road policy.
Nice.
And in that-
So that's all of Acro's roads, right?
Yeah, which we should probably consider adopting something like some of that. But in that, they have a, um-
I like that.
You like that?
That's short.
And so what I did, um, this is what Kelly had-
From Chris?
From your email. And this is what I'm recommending, that we say class six road, not maintain, pass at home risk. And this can be in large letters in the PO Alston Select Board. And I changed it from Select Board. It could be in small letters on the bottom.
In the interest of saving, uh, costs, does this need to be here at all? The only difference in the cost of the sign is going to be how much we run on.
What did they have? Do they, what do they have?
They have road unmaintained, travel at your own risk, no, no select, nothing.
I have no problem taking that off.
Yep.
Okay, so take that off. And then, um, I can give that to Kelly and you can take it.
Yep. See if we can get a press on.
Is that the merge that she'd like?
I think that works for me. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I'll second that. Are you in favor?
I am.
So we approve that for verbiage for class six road.
Is the town responsible, I know none of them are marked now, if accidents happen and somebody gets seriously hurt?
Well, this helps, this minimizes our liability. You sort of it.
Right. With that said, towns have a lot of protection under the law. So it's pretty hard for-
Are you liable if somebody gets seriously hurt?
There have been some horrendous cases where there was nothing ever posted. And they sued the town, and they lost. So, yeah. But believe me, this isn't really, it's not so much a liability question, it's whether we want to be proactive and kind of do the right thing and warn people that this road you're speeding down is about to turn into something you don't want to be speeding down. Great. Yeah, I had made note of that and I had looked through. The class we were at, our selectment's kindergarten we want to, referred to some federal standards for signage and that they recommended that we follow their signage standards. So evidently you separately and I looked at it, looked at both up and found out there was absolutely nothing, even remotely, that could pertain to a class six road or-
Probably not. Now, what I didn't do is call Stephen and ask him where he got his information from. But, um-
I think.
I'm happy.
Yeah, I am too. And I think for them to always recommend that you follow the national standards since New Hampshire doesn't have standards, that's the whole point. I think that's a good recommendation. It was just useless in this example. Excellent. Well, thank you.
Did you read that?
No, I did not. Um, this was another subject that got brought up and it was a recommendation that towns have a winter and climate weather policy for, for DPDW.
Liability.
Minimizing liability, thank you. Cause we want to go over some of the highlights of that since you've obviously read this one. They refer to this one from the town of Thornton.
Well, this is nothing we're going to act on tonight though.
It's just the-
It's inspirational thing?
Yeah.
What this is, is notice to the, um, town, the people in the town of Alston, what is expected of them. And it also is notice to the public, let's call it, as to what the town of Alston is agreeing to do. So that, um, when there's a question, I can give you some examples, but when there's a question, there's an opportunity for them to come and look at the policy and say, yes, that's my responsibility, or no, that's your responsibility. And it minimizes the potential, uh, litigation problems that come when someone does something. Now, I'll give you some examples. It says in here that residents are not allowed to plow their snow into the road. That's pretty straightforward. But the problem is, if someone does that, we have no policy that we can give them or point to them that will allow them, authority that we have, that they can't do that. In other words, once the policy is accepted by the Select Board, then it becomes, it has authority. And there's other things in there too. It says you can't park, uh, your vehicles during a storm on the side of the road. And if you do, and it's damaged, the town is not liable for it. So that, um, I don't know if we've had any problems with these kinds of things in the past, but it sets up that type of structure so that, um, the people in the town know it's expected of them during a storm. Now, as far as what the town is required to do, it lays that out as well. It says that the town is not responsible for a bare pavement policy. We don't have a bare pavement policy and et cetera, et cetera. So that people who have an accident, end up in a ditch, can't sue the town because there was snow on the road. So there's lots of preventative liability functions in this, uh, policy statement. It's made up of two parts, one general, one more specific. It's, this particular one is from the town of Thornton and we're going to have to go through and customize it to the town of Alston. But that's a general overview of where, where we're going with this. Then with any comments?
Very good. Any thoughts, comments on the town adopting that sort of a policy?
I think it's a good idea, but I think enough other towns have policies online that I would suggest do a little bit more digging to make sure you don't have anything. We can't as much into it as possible. There may be something that gets left out.
The reference we have to this particular policy is the greatest reference that we can get from the Municipal Association.
Okay.
Should we add this, um, when David meets with us next month? For him to review this and then he can really give you guys-
We could probably get it to him before then.
Yeah.
But let's say he'll be ready to discuss something like that.
The only other, I'm sorry. The only other thing I was just, you changed the policy at the landfill and now this. This stuff needs to go online, you know, so it's available to people.
Yeah. It, well, as a matter of fact, in here, it actually says that it will be posted into places in the town and made it available to the public, et cetera.
And to that point, um, the Municipal Association was clear that posting online is a suitable posted in a place. So as long as we're consistent in posting in our offices here and posting on our website, we're good. So I think Kelly can make that more of a process as we come across these sorts of things.
Yeah. The other thing is just the consistency word. Cause I think like last week, you know, Laura's office was closed and I don't know if that ever made it to the town webpage.
It's not enough.
And I was at the start of the society and there must have been probably at least eight or 10 people that came in. And even though the sign was out there, it was kind of funny to watch. Get their window and they're, you know, just hanging around. All of a sudden they realize, oh, the office is closed. And, you know, and so you've got to drive down here to find that out. And so when you have that webpage, it's like, we should be making use of it to communicate.
Pick up the phone. But I agree. Yeah, we've got a couple of things working on the website side. Did we ever hear anything back from our good friend?
Dos?
Yeah. Have we found out whether he's still in business and or?
He is still in business.
Both are, okay, good.
Yes. So he is, I spoke with him today and he is able to do a email for you guys at no charge. So there's several different ways that he can do that. So he can, he prefers to use the Gmail because it's free, um, for nonprofit. We already have Outlook. We can use Outlook. He also likes this roll accounts. So I'm not familiar with a roll account, but he said it's really easy to set up. So my concern when I was talking to him today is he was ready to roll your emails right over. My concern was, I thought your emails were your personal emails, which meant if you rolled it over, that your email, anyone that would be contacting you on, you know, Chris Wrightman at Gmail, it would automatically go to this new email account. I, I didn't like that idea because your emails need to be separate. So you want a separate email.
Here's what we want. I want every employee in town and every elected official to have an opportunity to have first name dot last name at AlstonNH.org.
Yep, that's what he, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
If he can do that, uh, okay. This is me just being a computer GP and unwilling to forgive, give up any control over anything. I would love for us to have administrative, uh, control over that. I don't want to rely on a third party. We need to throw another mail box up because we could train Kelly to do that.
Couldn't you do something like, uh, instead of, I don't know, well, instead of using the AlstonNH.org, you know, you could do like chris dot reitman dot Alston, New Hampshire at gmail.com and then somebody in town could set that up?
And that's what he was talking about.
But I really don't want to go down that path, but.
Do you know how quiet I am being?
There was another comment that came from, um, Municipal Association was, yes, absolutely use your domain names for your emails. Get it off of your personal accounts, even if it's personal accounts you set up on Gmail or anything like that. Get it off there. So. That's where we've been trending and we just have never been able to get an answer as to whether... I pursued this probably a year and a half ago with this guy. Trying, yeah, trying to, um, get what's called C panel access to that account, which would allow us to do all this stuff and we'd be done. But so, so, uh, however he wants to do that, don't worry about the client side of it. That's the Outlook or this or that. Just say, can you set up first name dot last name at AlstonNH.org? And if so, we'll give you a list of names. And then you can give us instructions on how to set up the clients.
You guys are ready to change everything over.
And we forward everything into those accounts. On our Gmail and stuff. Excellent. Well, thank you for following up on that.
You're welcome. I will call.
I'm glad to hear he's still living. Now, you don't get a bill from a guy, you don't hear from him, unlike you here now. He's starting to think the worst. Yeah, downside is, yeah, we probably did generate a bill out of this. Alright, is the MSG a separate category here?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Alright, we've hit on two things with the fire department already, the overhead door and return gear. Um, the MSG met a couple of weeks ago now, I think. And I think we pretty much wrapped up, um, what we feel we need to do at this point. In terms of the fire department, um, they have SOG, Standard Operating Guidelines, which are, were sold part of the employee handbook. If that's the case, the only thing that we recommended on that was that, um, it doesn't include in the document when it was written or who wrote it or if the document's been revised. I think anybody in, um, any kind of work will tell you that you need that kind of information on your documents. So we recommended that that happen. And the other thing that the fire department should consider is that when they, a new firefighter is given a document, they probably should have a sign off that firefighter received and reviewed it too. Again, from a liability standpoint, that would be a good thing. So we're not planning on submitting a final report because there are only a few things to go over. So that was one recommendation there. Any questions on that?
No.
Our SOGs are not part of the town annual. They are separate from the budget. Other than that, yeah.
Okay. Well, they, I thought you said there was a copy down here that Linda had copies.
She's got a copy of them, but-
It's a copy of yours.
Right. Which are separate from the employee handbook.
I was under the impression that you guys still make sense that they were part of the employee handbook, but whatever.
We pass them out together when, when we have the employee handbook.
And I misunderstood. But they should certainly have a revision and a history date and to keep track of. You know, cause that way you can establish that someone was given the latest revision, you know, that they read it and everything too. So, and that just goes from, you know, my experience, both in manufacturing as a teacher, you want to make sure people have those up to date documents and stuff, so. Alright, um, physicals, the, um, you handed me this last week and I went online to see if I could find any other information. They have a new medical release form now for any kind of class that involves-
Strangulation.
Yeah. And you're talking about big, um, you know, they, they list 13 different things, one of which is, you know, real general, performing firefighting tasks. You know, wearing an SCVA, um, exposure to toxic, who's climbing 60 more flights of stairs. Well, he answers to a doctor and I mean, 60 more flights of stairs. Does that mean that you have a stress test? You know, performing, they have to wear an SCVA. Does a doctor know how to do respiratory fit tests? Whatever. It does not specify what a physical needs to include.
This is coming from the state association?
Yeah, the state board.
State Fire Standards and Training.
Right.
Is that the equivalent of the police standards and training?
Same thing.
Okay, that for you guys.
They're the ones that do the training that is standardized. As of this year, January 1st, anyone taking, as of right now, because they did back off a little bit, a level one or a level two class has to have this physical.
Okay. So have you talked to them?
I shouldn't say physical, this sign off.
Right. Have you talked to them? Have we talked to other, uh, local agencies to see how they're dealing with this?
I'm getting that.
Okay.
The first, the first, um, physical came in at eleven hundred dollars, which is obviously, yeah, you know, a little high and also going to kill a budget. Okay. And so, uh, the suggestion was made to touch base with, um, Michelle Moore, who's a doctor who lives in town, Chris Hanson's wife. And, um, I did talk to her, uh, that she thought, which is that she may have some ideas of to, you know, where to go and how to handle this. And I guess the organization she used to be with used to do some stuff. She did suggest talking to, um, apparently some of the urgent cares in town, which, which, uh, Mary Ann Wolf had volunteered to make some calls when we hit that point. But apparently the Keen Police Department is now using the new urgent care for their physicals. But, um, Michelle also recommended that we touch base with other departments. So she suggested in particular Keen to find out who they use. So I messaged Phil Bringle, who had her backlog, so I was going to ask you about that.
Keen is a full-time department, so they do the full-blown physical.
Okay.
Money's no object in Keen.
What is five hundred?
Well, it's a full-time department. It's, there are standards that they have to meet.
Bobby?
Um, regarding the subject, Walpole has a medical, I don't know, PA or doctor on their department that is taking care of the, they're under the same thing as you. Some of the, uh, like Acro's and Langdon, then, some of them are, you can contact- Some of the, uh, like Acro's and Langdon and them, some of them are, are, you can contact them. They're sending people over to Vermont, getting the same with doctors because it's a lot cheaper. So I did talk around to see what other departments were doing and none of them have sent them to Keene, to Cheshire, for eleven hundred dollar bill. Nobody does that.
Yeah. I mean, off the top of my head, going to urgent care where they say they will do, perform anything for no more than two hundred and fifty bucks, including physicals, quote unquote, I think they're assuming school physicals.